I'm pretty sure it's helpful.
It's not, okay.
Listen.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, can we get going?
In a half hour. We don't have water. We'll get some water, get you a little cup. And we can just wait till she comes in, maybe she's gonna call. I can also go there and find out how many I have. Let me do that.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this public hearing to order for the Region 12 School District. Thank you all for coming. My name is Jim Hirschfield. I'm the Chairman of the Region 12 Board of Education. I'd like to read the warning of this district meeting, public hearing, for the Regional School District Number 12, towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington, March 4, 2014. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington are hereby warned that a public meeting of Regional School District Number 12 will be held at the Shipog Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at 7:00 PM for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Regional School District 12 Plan. I'd like now to read the motion that was approved by the Board of Education on February 20, at its February 24, 2014, meeting. You're gonna have to bear with me, I'll read this one. As we go through tonight, there's a few other lengthier ones, or at least one lengthier one that's gonna have to be written, uh, read, excuse me, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Brown to do that, so I'm glad he showed up. Resolution of the Board of Education of Regional School District Number 12, February 24, 2014, resolved that the officers of the Board of Education and the Superintendent are authorized and directed to cause a district meeting to be called for the purpose of conducting a public hearing at Shipog Valley High School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at 7:00 PM. With respect to the following recommendation of the Board, which recommendation is hereby approved? That the Regional School District 12 Plan, as approved by the State Board of Education on May 11, 1967, be amended by deleting the language, quote, "elementary grades K-5 to remain in their present hometown schools," unquote, which appears on Page 2 of the plan, and deleting the language, quote, "In the proposed plan, the lower elementary gates, grades, excuse me, K through 5 will remain in their respective hometown schools," unquote, from Page 5 of the plan. Further resolved that the members of the Board of Education hold a meeting at Shipog Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, following the aforementioned said public hearing, to schedule a referendum vote on the amendment to be discussed at the public hearing. The motion passed 8 to 4 to 0. So that's why we're here tonight. I do want to bring something up that's occurred just today. At the March 20, the February 24 meeting, there was a motion made to add to the language that I just read about the deletion of language of hometown schools in each of the towns to add language that said, "and the construction of a consolidated elementary school." Based on the advice of our attorney that evening, that we had received that evening, a majority of the Board voted that motion down, and so that motion was not approved. Today, I've heard from the Board's attorney, who's present tonight, and I'll introduce everyone shortly, that in discussing the matter with the State Board of Education today, it is now his opinion that that language should be added to this, this proposal. We can't do that tonight. We have to go forward with the public hearing, as been warned and noticed, and so that's what we'll do. What I intend, what I, I can't speak for everyone, but my intent is to take everything that everyone has to say tonight into account. We are going, if we adjourn this public hearing and have a meeting, a Board of Ed meeting after this, which we are gonna do right here, and if we were to decide to do that, it's gonna require another public hearing. And so we're going to, I'm gonna ask that another public hearing be scheduled sometime next week, because as I understand the law, you can only vote on something that's been noticed in the public hearing. So if there's questions about that, again, our attorney is present, and he can answer those questions, hopefully. At this time, I'd like to introduce the members of the folks who are present here up front. Starting all the way down at the end is Mr. Don O'Leary, our Facilities Director, Michael Sinatra, member of the Board of Education from Bridgewater, Kelly Lott, member of the Board of Education from Roxbury. I can't see, but is that Greg Kala, a member of the Board of Education from Roxbury? Anthony, Mr. Anthony Amato, who's a volunteer and has helped us on financial issues, is from the town of Washington. I'm sorry, I can't see Jen, before, in front of Mr. Amato is Jennifer Pody, a member of the Board of Education from Washington. Then to Valerie Anderson, a member of the Board of Education from Washington. Next, Mr. Robert Geeson, the Director of Finance for the Region 12 Board of Ed. Next is Mr. Barry Bernaby from Webster Bank. Next, Mr. Glenn Rybacki, Esquire Attorney, he's the Board's Bond Counsel. Next, Ms. Teresa DeBrito, the Director of Curriculum and Instruction for Region 12. Next, Dr. Patricia Cosentino, the Superintendent of Region 12. Next, Mr. Gary Brochu, the Board's Attorney. Next, Mr. Alan Brown, the member of the Board of Ed from Bridgewater and the Vice Chair of the Board. Next, Ms. Michelle Gora, member of the Board of Education from Washington, Mr. Tony Badini, member of the Board of Ed from Washington, Ms. Emily, Mrs. Emily Hibbard, member of the Board of Education from Roxbury, Mr. Peter Tagley, member of the Board of Education from Washington, Mrs. Susan Stumpf, member of the Board of Education from Bridgewater, Mr. Ken, and I hope I don't mispronounce your name, Mr. Ken Biaga from ONG, Mr. Michael Berger, and Mr. Dan Cassinelli from Fletcher Thompson. If I mispronounced anybody's name, I apologize. I'd just like to review the procedures that will follow tonight. Over in the corner is a microphone. If you want to be heard, I would ask you to raise your hand, I will recognize you. You need to go to the microphone, state your name, identify yourself, and the town that you're from. I'm gonna limit each person to three minutes, either comments, questions, and that's just to give everybody a chance to talk. If after everyone's had a chance, somebody who's already spoken wants to speak again, that's fine, I'll recognize them again. I just ask that you don't repeat yourself over and over on a point that you've already made. All right, so with that, I'll open the, um, hold on, I'm sorry. I guess there's these slides that I'm supposed to go through? I just want to give some background as to why we're here tonight. We're here to discuss a new PK, grade 5 school conceptual designs, which you'll see, in addition to high school and middle, middle school capital needs and repairs, and this is the public hearing presentation on those issues. Okay, next? Yeah, if you don't mind. The Region 12 Long Range Plan. The, the way, the genesis of all of this, quite frankly, is that the three first selectmen of the towns of Washington, Roxbury, and Bridgewater, the current first selectmen of Washington and Roxbury, and the former first selectmen from Bridgewater, came to the Board of Education in 2011 and said that the, excuse me. All right, okay. I'm sorry, I'm out of, I'm out of place. This is gonna be with, this presentation that I'm doing now is with regard to the second public hearing, so let's stop where I'm at, I apologize for that. So with regard to the first public hearing on the amendment to the plan, is there anyone who would like to be heard? If you would raise your hand. Sir, if you would go to the microphone, identify yourself.
My name is Paul Lang from Roxbury, Connecticut. I have a brief statement and then a question. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Like many people here, I received a notice of public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Region 12 District Plan as approved on May 11, 1967. If I had not already attended previous public and Board of Ed meetings, I would not have any idea what would be discussed this evening. In contrast, when I picked up my mail today, there was a beautiful colored brochure touting the benefits of a new consolidated pre-K through 5 school. This did not surprise me. The Region 12 Board of Ed has consistently engaged in a cart before the horse approach in providing information to the community in regard to amending the regionalization plan and the building of a new K through 5 school. As previously stated here, the Region 12 District Plan 1967 contains language, and I quote, "elementary grades K through 5 remain in their present hometown schools." Page 5, and I quote, "In the proposed plan, the lower elementary grades K through 5 will remain in their respective hometown schools." And up until tonight, I was pretty sure that the current BOA just wanted to delete this language, period. I am not in favor of this amendment. The Strategic Planning Report, often referred to by the BOA, warns in reference, in reference to presentation of data, and this is quoted from the Long Range Strategic Plan. While these numbers have been circulated and presented in many forms, the history of agenda-driven use has created a level of skepticism about the numbers, what goes into them, and what they mean. Without good data, the rest of the process is doomed. I am one of those skeptics. I agree with the authors of the Strategic Planning Report in this regard. In order for me to support such an amendment, I would have to have complete trust in Region 12 BOA. As of yet, this Board has not earned my trust. Now, the question I have, because you've already answered most of it, maybe just if you can assure me that as of yet, the Board of Ed has not met the requirements of 10-47C, and this is not the public hearing called for as per 10-47C. Is that correct?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Brochure, our Board's Attorney, to speak to that.
Well, the requirement of 10-47C, which is the applicable statute for the amendment of a regionalization plan. I'm sorry, is it not on? I apologize. Again, I believe the question is on Connecticut General Statute 1047C, correct?
Um, yeah, it refers to the, you know, the dictates of 10-47C, yes.
Right. And 1047C is the applicable statute for amending or changing the regional plan. And 1047C calls for a report and a question to be presented at a public hearing, which my understanding is this is the public hearing that the Board is scheduled for these purposes, and then following that, scheduling a referendum, assuming they, as a result of the hearing, they wish to go forward. Any referendum question would need to be approved by a majority of each of the member communities, as opposed to under 1040, uh, 53, in terms of bond approval, it just simply needs a majority of the region.
Um, well, that doesn't really answer my question, so...
I'm sorry, then.
Um, let me, let me proceed with the question that I thought was already answered by the Chairman, and we'll go that way. Not to be redundant, the Regional Board of Education, and I'm gonna read this straight out of 1047C. Um, why don't we start from the beginning with the question?
Sir, you got...
Yeah, okay, I'll make it quick, all right? I'm just gonna read, you know, this, and you won't have to hear from me anymore.
Well, I'm trying to, we're trying to answer your question.
Yeah, okay, but I didn't get the answer, otherwise I would be sitting down by now. In an effort designed to protect voters and provide for an informed electorate, the State of Connecticut Statute 1047C requires a Board of Education that finds it advisable to amend the plan to follow these procedures, and I quote, "The Regional Board of Education shall prepare a report on the proposed amendment, including the question to be presented, file a copy with the Commissioner of Education and the Clerk of each member town, make copies of such report available to the public at a district meeting called to present the plan. After such public hearings, shall set a date for the referendum." My question is, has the Region 12 Board of Education complied with the obligations set forth in 10-47C? More importantly, have you made a sincere effort to adhere to the spirit of the law, which is notice and information, ensuring that the public is well-informed and ready to vote on the biggest question to be presented in our region in decades? That's the question.
Well, I know the question was presented to you because it was just read by the Chair. I can't speak factually as to whether a report has been shared because, the meeting, because I, I simply don't know that. So I'm sure that could be answered by the Chair.
Got to, Costino?
Yes, we did prepare, I'm not gonna say it's a report, because we felt very, that it was premature to send a report when the Board had not approved anything to go to referendum, and we still had some questions about moving forward with the amendment as proposed on February 24. The Commissioner of Education was first informed in July of 2013. He has, I've had a conversation with him about it, and he has a, a letter stating what we have done so far, a copy of the plan, a pamphlet that went home to all of the community members, and that the agendas for tonight's meeting, as well as the clerks of each town. They all got it today by 3, by 12 o'clock. So we did comply with that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you with this. I spoke with Tom Clerk at the town of Roxbury. No such report has been filed, and because there was no such report, it definitely did not contain the question. So I'm of the opinion that this public meeting does not constitute the public meeting set forth in 10-47C. And I'm gonna make just a quick recommendation. Not adhering to 10-47C costs Region 14 a great deal of money, as the Region 12 Attorney I'm sure is aware of. I would suggest that this time in Region 12, that you do follow the rules, not only because they were designed to protect the public and make sure that they were well-informed, but because as a Board, this is your responsibility, not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could just speak to the last issue, as to whether or not the spirit of the law was passed, was a, was a hereto. I think, yes, it was. We have had numerous public hearings, all kinds of information on what has been going on, nothing has been hidden from the public. People have come to our meetings, addressed the Board, so I think the Board has tried to be as open and honest as possible. A lot of work has gone into this with full public knowledge of what's going on. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Wainwright, I'm from Bridgewater, and I would like to state the fact that after, in my opinion, after this referendum fails, which it's gonna fail shortly, other options need to be evaluated. This week, a tuition out study was sent to the Board of Selectment, the Board of Education, and Superintendent, and the Board of Finances. And I would like to just read the cover letter for this, and it's a bit, a copy of it for the, for the record. Attached for your consideration, this is dated February 24, and is addressed to the Board of Selectment, Board of Finances, and the Board of Education, and Dr. Cosentino. Attached for your consideration is an estimated, an estimation of the tuition out option for Shipog Middle School and High School students. In this referendum, you will find an estimate that costs, the cost advantage of tuition out with an annual savings of more than $3 million. The advantage over 20 years is approximately $68 million, plus the avoidance of tens of millions of debt contemplated for building projects. The financial benefit of tuition out option is too big to be ignored. We are a population of 8,000 people, and we must not lose the opportunity, the tuition, this opportunity. The tuition option, out option is financially and academically superior to any consolidation option under evaluation. Unfortunately, the declining enrollment is out of our control, and the demise of Shipog may be inevitable. Shipog is a victim of poor economy and the shifting demographics. We request a detailed evaluation of the tuition out option with full involvement of the Towns Board of Finance. Signed, Ed Wainwright, Lloyd Wilkinson, Matt Frangola, who had to be the former Board of Education Chairman, Ed Tierney, Vivian Wainwright, Tom Gilmore, Meg Care, Lois Carrera, Wayne Care, Ed Bennett, Bob Brown, Bill McGeorge, Valerie Brown, Roland Harvey, Sharon Wimbley, and Jay Cronulla. There are four, I believe, four former Board of Education members in this list, and three former Board of Selectment members on this list. So I would like to submit the report for the record. Who do I give it to?
Just leave it on the table, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And anybody who wants one is welcome to one, I've got plenty of copies.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Julie Stewart from Bridgewater and co-chair of Save Our Schools. I have a letter, and it's the same letter that Dr. Cosentino referred to earlier, that was sent in to the Commissioner of Education last July, and in that letter, it has the specific language that was going to be used, based on what this Board approved last June to change the regional plan. And the specific language in here, I won't read the whole thing, but the point is that the language was very, very specific, and it was telling all the voters in our region exactly what we were gonna be changing to, and it provided the clarity that was a very big discussion at the last Board of Ed meeting. At the last Board of Ed meeting, for those who were not there, the Board decided to take that clarity out of the question and make the question very open-ended, and not tell voters what we were actually changing to. And that was told to us that it was on the advice of our attorney. So then here tonight, and so the language before us is very vague, and here tonight, you're telling us that the language, the attorney has now advised us, that the language could be specific to say what we would actually be changing to, i.e. a consolidated school on the Shipog campus. So my question is, if we sent this to the state last July, and this was what we were going to do, and the language was very specific, and I assume blessed by our attorneys, why then did our attorneys then give us language to make it vague, and now again today, just today, as you said, the attorneys are giving us language to then clarify it?
Here.
Recently, and actually, as soon as, as late as today, we've had conversations with the Department of Education. The issue on 1047C in terms of what's required for the referendum question unfortunately is kind of unwalked territory, if you will, as evidenced by the fact that this very district in 2007 had a Superior Court decision, judge moved one way, and then Superior Court, Supreme Court overruled its appellate decision and made its own decision. The advice to the Board from last week in terms of what you were referencing wasn't necessarily a specific language, but noting that if, was really about the issue of flexibility. In other words, the Supreme Court has specifically identified, as I think a gentleman had identified earlier, Page 2 and Page 5, which both reference hometown schools. So clearly, any question, if you're going to amend this plan or include a consolidated school, would have to remove those two sections, and I don't think anyone is disputing that. The issue then becomes, in terms of the remainder of the plan, because you have the plan, and you would be striking those two sentences, but the rest of the plan would remain. The question then becomes in terms of two, really two questions. One is, is it then specific enough for the plan? Not in terms of informing voters, there's many mechanisms the Board can use to inform voters. The point of the referendum question isn't to inform so much as to literally change the text of the plan. So the question is, is that the plan then sufficient to accommodate a bonding question in terms of doing that? That's one. The other piece was discussion with the Department of Education, which was also looking at this particular issue the first time, is when you have a question that comes to a public hearing like this evening, and the purpose, obviously, of public hearing is to hear from people like you and the other individuals speaking, and for the Board to contemplate, well, based on that input, do we revise the question, what does the question look like? Uh, and it was the opinion of the Department of Education that if you were to incorporate, for example, your feedback, and add language or, or change language, that a second public hearing would be necessary. That there, they felt that at some point, there has to be a final question with a public hearing, with a final question coming up, identical to the one going in. Uh, and that was frankly, a new opinion from them. So that's part of the contemplation. The other part is terms of what has to be in the question, which goes to your point of identifying, say, a consolidated school, for example. Is the answer is really, we don't know. The Supreme Court has specifically noted, we're gonna look at this on a case-by-case basis. And so contemplating that, it is my opinion that in terms of safe and sorry, if you will, the safest option is to include specifically, not just deleting that language, but also putting specifically the idea, for example, identification of a consolidated school. One can certainly make arguments, both of us, I'm not arguing that, but in talking to the Department of Education, kind of relooking at the law, and relooking at the case law, I will concede that I am now much more in the safe and sorry than I previously was. And so that's where, where that change came. And I hope that explains it, probably, I probably could've done a better job explaining it, and I apologize for that, but it, it really is one in terms of making sure that the amendment appropriately changes the plan to allow for any bonding decision that you wish to do as a community. And obviously, that's still dependent on majority vote of the voters, that's one. And the second piece is trying to do it in a way that ensures that it's safe from challenge later on, if a challenge was to come here. The answer is that we won't know until a challenge would come, and then let the Supreme Court decide. So I hope that's helpful.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Michelle Manafi, and I'm a Region 12 mother. My daughter Harlequin attends, my daughter Harlequin attends Washington Primary School, but the fact is, I live in Region 12. I, when I was looking for a place to start a family, I looked in Bridgewater, Roxbury, Washington. Why? Because we live in an idyllic corner of Connecticut, a corner of Connecticut that produces amazing people who do incredible things. How do we do that? We do that through the very best education that we can possibly offer our children. Now, when we look at a law, or rules, or anything that was created in 1967, well, times have changed, and whether we like it or not, the needs of our communities evolve. But what doesn't change is the need to view ourselves as a community, to continue to work together, to create the, the future, to create the potential for the great things the youth of our community have to offer. And what I've seen in my decade or so living here, raising a lovely girl who, who could not ask for a place to go up, what I have seen is not a community. What I see are people drawing indelible lines in the, in the sand, and, and no longer engaging in meaningful discourse. I mean, I understand that when we talk about our children, we speak... I mean, I understand that when we talk about our children, we speak passionately, I'm sure you can hear it, I feel passionately about this subject. But while I can argue passionately, I have to make decisions rationally. And I am really hopeful that we can come together finally, after so many votes, after so much, frankly, juvenile debate, where we don't, we don't come together in any way, where we, we beat our chests and take our toys and go home. We behave in ways we would be embarrassed if our children acted. I'm hopeful we can come together as a community and put forth a solution that is a sustainable one for our future and for the future of those kids that we all thank so much. And like one of the gentlemen who spoke earlier, if not, if we cannot find a way to listen to each other, to come back to this table like reasonable-thinking people, if we cannot set the example for our children that we should, then perhaps we do have to look at options that I don't want to think about. My daughter is a Region 12 child. She plays, she plays on basketball teams with everybody's girls here. She participates in ASAP programs, they all go to the library together, they play soccer together and softball together. It doesn't, our petty border discrepancies are meaningless to these children. These children deserve every opportunity that we can give them. And if we cannot come together, I'm afraid that our only option is to consider deregionalization. And I don't want it to come to that. My daughter's world is bigger water and better for knowing Roxbury girls, Washington girls, Bridgewater girls, because we're Region 12 girls, right? I'm hopeful we can come together and make a good solution, but if not, I think we're going to have to look at deregionalization as an option. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Nicole Easley, I'm a Bridgewater resident, although I grew up in Washington. I have two children, a seven-year-old just about to turn eight, and a two-year-old son. My question is maybe a little bit off-topic tonight, and I apologize if it was asked at a different meeting, this is the first meeting that I've attended. We, a few years ago, moved back to Connecticut from Florida, and we moved to Sandy Hook. And my daughter attended Sandy Hook Elementary, and we now live in Bridgewater. So my daughter is very happy and comfortable at Burnham, she feels safe there. And when I look at the pictures of the new elementary school, I see a lot of glass, a lot of big glass doors, a lot of big glass windows, and I know from growing up in Washington how far away the police and the fire are. And so my concern is safety, and I'm wondering if there are going to be security officers on campus? Do you know how long it would take for a security personnel to get to the campus? Can you tell me anything that would assuage my fears?
The school does employ a security resource officer. After the public hearing on this issue with regard to the amendment of the plan, we're going to move to the regional, the public hearing with regard to the project itself that's being proposed. And in that, there'll be a presentation about safety and all those questions, I hope, will be answered. So I hope, if you'll just wait until that presentation, there'll be photographs, drawings of the proposed building to date, and I'm sure that issue of safety will be addressed.
And when is that scheduled for?
Right after, as soon as this ends.
Oh, okay. Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Henry, First Selectman, Town of Roxbury. I just, I came in a few minutes late, but I just want to get back to the question. So are you, just what I understand, you're going to be voting on what the question is going to be tonight, because it may have changed, and then you will be holding another public hearing on that?
That is, yes. That is what I'm going to be proposing.
So if the question looks like it's going towards what the attorney said, the language to say that there will not be an elementary school in each town, and
The construction of-
That there will be a consolidated school. So if that is defeated, then
I'm sorry, if that's defeated by the board or by the public?
By the public. Okay. If that is defeated by the public, and there have been other, you know, ideas going around about sharing elementary schools, et cetera, we have to start all over with the question, another public hearing, and just trying to get what the process is going to be. Because then you will not be allowed to share K1, 2, 3, 4, or 5, as has been brought up. Is that correct?
I do not be able to share between towns, that's fine. Yes, that's correct.
Right.
Yes, we require any amendment to that plan, any amendment to the setup now, which is K through 5 in each town, will require a public hearing and a vote of the district, yes.
Okay.
Which, in addition, anything that is different from what's set forth in the regional plan does require modification and vote and approval by each town.
Correct.
And there was one Superior, the Pratt decision, it was a situation, I think it's 14, I'm not sure. But they had language about, they have two K-5 schools, but they're not located, you can have students come, there's no hometown restriction, if you will, but their attempt to go from essentially a K-2 to a 3-5 makeup was defeated by the Superior Court, saying that the plan didn't allow for that. So anything other than a K-5, your current structure would need a modification and amended plan.
But this board tonight could go against your recommendation and have just that vague question to say that we just want to modify what the plan is, and not say that we would also like to construct a consolidated school on the Shippag campus.
Yes.
The board can always, the board is the authority, they decide what question they wish to approve, and if they were to approve that same question, they wouldn't have to have a second meeting, because the question would have already been presented at the public hearing. The only time, way you need is second hearing, and this is again advice to the Department of Education, is if the question's changed in any way.
So if it is defeated in that vote, this just pushes everything off farther down the road, where you have to start over with another question, or another plan, or whatever. I'm just trying to understand that.
Your timing is always, the only timing mechanism in the statute is that you have to set the date thirty days prior to the vote. So whenever the board sets the question, sets the date, then thirty days afterwards. So if the board was to do it on March 10th, you could have a vote by April 10th, and so forth. So that's, your really timing mechanism is that thirty-day window. It can be longer, certainly, but you have to have at least thirty days.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. No, I'm sorry, I recognize the guy in the back, and then you, Sir Fletcher. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. Gary Lord of Roxbury. I think Barbara makes a good point, and you might be wise to keep the change of the regional plan vague, so that there are other options available in the event that the regional plan is allowed to be changed, but the dollars are not voted for for the school, and still make up some other options. Good point. Thank you.
All right. Sir? Thank you.
Rambler Lord from Bridgewater. I've been looking at your information that you have sent out, and it seems, as a taxpayer, there's only half of what it costs, what it's going to cost me as a taxpayer. There has been no number for the bounding cost, the maintenance of the three buildings that the taxpayer will still own after you add a fourth building. It seems that your numbers to the taxpayer are not there. All you're saying is about a student cost, which really is a little bit irrelevant when it comes to me paying my taxes. We have, there hasn't been no mention what happens to the three buildings. You walk away from them, I guess, but the taxpayer doesn't. So I just don't understand where all those numbers are.
In the second public hearing tonight with regard to the plan, there will be a financial presentation, and I believe that some of those issues will be addressed. As to the buildings, the three elementary school buildings are owned by the towns. If this plan were approved and the region no longer operated in those three buildings, they would continue to be owned by the towns. But I believe that most of these other costs, bounding costs and everything, are addressed by the plan. But I'd ask you to please wait till the financial presentation, and I think that will become more clear. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Carolyn Dwyer, Save Our Schools, I live in Bridgewater. I'd like to caution this board from keeping it vague, and I was so thrilled to hear what the attorney was saying this evening, because finally, if you take the attorney's advice, you will actually get a clear answer. We have heard over the past year from the selectmen, from the chair here, from Dr. Cosentino, that all we want is a clear answer. If you leave it open-ended, you do not answer that question for the people of this region. In addition, what voter, in their right mind, would vote to give up all of their voting rights to an open-ended question to allow a majority of eight people on the board forever more to run their towns? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
The continued discussion, this is not to be redundant here, but I thought we went into this meeting with the chairman's statement that we were going to hold another public meeting, which fulfilled the requirements set forth in 10-47(c). And now it's being kicked around that somehow that's still optional. So I guess, and I'm just going to paraphrase this time, because I've read 10-47(c) enough times that I've probably committed it to memory, but just to paraphrase, or actually to quote, I guess, the question, proposed amendment, including the question to be presented, file a copy with the Commissioner of Ed and the clerk of each member town, make copies of such report available to the public at a district meeting called to present the plan. Like I said, I know for a fact that this report, including the question, has not been filed with the town clerk of Roxbury. My next question, I guess, is, do you have copies of said report here for me, so that I can get a clear understanding of the report and the question? And once again, the question of whether or not you're going to have another public meeting, and this is for your attorney, are you seriously contemplating not having another public meeting? Because through your firm's involvement in the Region 14 debacle, you, of all people, should know that if you don't, this is going to Supreme Court, and it's going to cost Region 12 similar amounts of money that were spent on Region 14's loss. So that part of the question is, you know, to the attorney. If not, my question is, if you're, if this meeting is fulfilling the requirements of 10-47(c), can I get a copy of that report that includes the question?
I don't know if that's available. If it is, yes, we have it, but I want to address, okay, is it available?
I will, I'm going to have Mrs. Gallo make a report of what was sent to the Commissioner.
A copy.
A copy. And then we have signed at Central Office, stamped before 12 o'clock noon today from every clerk, the report. And as I said, I'll just read, "At this time, the question to be presented to voters has not been approved by the Board of Education, so be pre-matured to report, to prepare a report on the proposed amendment and the question to be presented." So that is why there's not a full report, but there is notification. So I will ask Mrs. Gallo to make copies, and they will be available at the, outside in about five minutes. Thank you.
Well, in my mind, that doesn't fulfill the requirements of 10-47(c), so I guess my question to the attorney, you know, I'd like to answer the question, I'd like to be clear. There's a public hearing on the issue, on the question that's been noticed and is before the public tonight. If, after the public hearings, Board of Education is going to have a meeting, it's going to hear from its attorneys. If the board decides to take no action, not to change the question, then the public hearing requirement has been fulfilled. If the board decides that it wants to change the question, add the language of, and construct a consolidated school, that will require another public hearing. So it's going to be up to the board. Okay. Just a word of caution, I guess, Region 14 is the only other region in the state of Connecticut that decided to amend their regional plan. The result was, after efforts to circumvent 10-47(c), a lawsuit, a loss of said lawsuit, and an expenditure of approximately $200,000 in legal fees, and a recommendation that they, after the decision, that maybe they appeal. I would just like to caution Region 12, don't do this again. You already have a model for failure. Please don't subject Region 12 to this.
There's no intent to behave the requirements of 10-47(c).
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Martin Jason McKay, I'm also the parent of a Region 12, two children. It goes without saying, the demographics have changed a lot. The demographics in this day and age changes what we do. I live in this region by choice. I drive fifty miles one way, so my kids can grow up in this region. Something needs to be done. You can only kick the can down the road so far, you're going to run out of road soon. I like the fact I know the kids in my children's classes. I like the fact that the three towns share common values, although Bridgewater's still dry, but we can talk about that later. I like the fact that parents are passionate about their children's education. I like the fact I live in this region, we're very lucky to have the teachers and the school systems we do. What I want to see happen is a solution. We talk about symptoms, we don't talk about root causes, we don't talk about fixing the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, then I'm going to adjourn this first public hearing and move on to the second public hearing. Mike White says we're adjourned at 7:51, thereabouts. All right. I'm going to call the public hearing to order. With regard to the new proposed pre-K-5 school and the repairs to the Shippag Valley school, I'll read the warning of the meeting. Warning, District Meeting, Public Hearing, Regional School District Number 12, Towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington, March 4, 2014. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington are hereby warned that a public meeting of Regional School District Number 12 will be held at Shippag Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at 7:15 p.m., it's actually, whatever the time is, 7:51 or 2, for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the final conceptual design and cost estimate for the pre-K-5 building project and repairs to the Shippag Valley Middle High School, prepared by the Regional Board of Education for Shippag Valley Regional School District 12. I'd now like to ask, since he's a professional at this, Mr. Brown, if you would assist me and read the motion from the board meeting from February 24, 2014. Mr. Brown, can you do it? Yes, it's quite lengthy, I'm sorry, but it's a matter of procedure, we have to do this.
I will assess that.
When you come up here if you'd like.
Resolution of the Board of Education, Regional School District Number 12, this is offered to the officers of the Board of Education-
of the officers of the Board of Education, superintendent, authorized, directed, caused a district meeting to be called for the purpose of conducting a public hearing at Shippawak Valley Middle High School. You can play it back if you'd like, slower. We just have to get it over with before bed. On South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at 7:15, or actually 7:42 p.m. With respect to the following recommendations of the Board, which recommendations are hereby approved? One, that $40,879,191 dollars be appropriated for one, costs related to the design, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new, approximately 277 to 300 student capacity consolidated elementary school located on the Shippawak Valley campus in the town of Washington, so the entire pre-kindergarten through grade five population of the district. Site improvements related to work and improvements, and costs related to financing of the project, estimated cost of $32,597,202 dollars. And two, costs related to design, construction, and installation of various improvements and renovations to Shippawak Valley Middle High School. I'm struck language, sorry, hold on.
Excuse me, Alan. I don't mean to have a moderate made of this. Is anybody opposed to him simply reading this as fast as he can? Or does anyone want it slowly read so they can hear it? All right, Alan, why don't you read it, if you would, Alan? Just read it at regular speed.
Go to the microphone, really. It's a...
Come on, come on, be a gal. Let's sit where yours is. We'll walk one seat, he'll be back in four. Thank you.
Quickly, but not that quickly. Right. Result, that the officers and the Board of Education and the superintendent are authorized and directed to cause a direct district meeting to be called for the purpose of conducting a public hearing at Shippawak Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street in Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at 7:15 p.m. With respect to the following recommendations of the Board, which recommendations are hereby approved? That $40,879,191 dollars be appropriated for one, costs related to the design, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new, approximately 277 to 300 student capacity consolidated elementary school located on the Shippawak Valley campus in the town of Washington, to serve the entire pre-kindergarten through grade five population of the district. Site improvements related to work and improvements, and costs related to financing of the project, estimated cost of $32,597,202 dollars. And two, costs related to the design, construction, and installation of various improvements and renovations to Shippawak Valley Middle High School, contemplated to include replacement of bleachers and the pool gymnasium, site lighting improvements, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning system improvements, exhaust system improvements, energy management system improvements, hot water system improvements, including installation of water heaters and water storage tanks, sewage injection system improvements, and various related furnishings, equipment, and building and site improvements, and costs related to the financing of the project, estimated cost of $88,189,189 dollars. The appropriation may be spent for design and construction costs, survey testing, committee costs, furnishings, fixtures, equipment, materials, technology, infrastructure, equipment, on and off-site improvements, including athletic and play facilities, utilities and utility extensions and connections, relocation costs, architects' fees, engineering fees, construction management costs and fees, consultant fees, legal fees, net interest, and borrowing, other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project and its financing. The Board of Education or any building committee delegated all or any portion of such responsibility by the Board of Education shall be authorized to determine the scope and particulars of the project, and may reduce or modify the scope of the project as desirable and the entire appropriation. But as to each portion of the project, none of which, the estimated cost of each such portion of the project may be spent on the project as so reduced or modified. No expenditure shall be made pursuant to this appropriation to elementary school until the minutes required by Regional School District Number 12, allowing for the consolidated elementary school located on the Shippawak Valley campus in the town of Washington, to serve the entire pre-kindergarten through grade five population of the district, has been approved. Two, that $40,879,191 dollars of bonds, notes, and temporary notes of the district be authorized to finance the appropriation. The amount of the bonds, notes, and temporary notes authorized shall be reduced by the amount of grants received by the district for the project. Three, that the chairman and treasurer or such officer or body delegated such authority by the Board of Education be authorized to require the district and its member towns to comply with applicable federal income tax requirements for taxes and bonds, and to make representations, measure written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information. Four, the Board of Education authorized to approve the interrelated contracts for the project, and the Board of Education or such officer or body to whom the Board delegates such authority be authorized to approve the expenditure of said appropriation and such other matters as is desirable or necessary to complete the project. Five, that the appropriation may hereby shall not be effective until the district receives any necessary report of improvements in the project pursuant to Section 8-24 of Connecticut general statutes. Six, that the appropriation and bond, note, and temporary note authorization be submitted to referendum through the electors and citizens qualified to vote in the member towns of the district. Further resolved, that the projects be reserved, referred to the Washington Planning and Zoning Commission for a report pursuant to Section 8-24 of Connecticut general statutes. Further resolved, that the members of the Board of Education hold a meeting at Shippawak Valley Middle High School, 159 South Street, Washington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, March 4, 2014, following the aforementioned public hearing, to act on the recommendations of the Board which are to be discussed at the public hearing. Motion passed 8 to 4 to 0, in violation of privilege pertaining to the track, which I will read as soon to leave.
Thank you, Alan. And I have to apologize to you. You didn't have prior notice if I was going to ask you to do that, so that was a temporary mistake. All right. Now I would like to start a short presentation before I turn the meeting over to others. Do you have the slides? All right. So again, why we're here tonight is to discuss this proposed new pre-K grade five school, conceptual designs for the high school, middle school, capital needs and repairs, and for the public hearing. How we got here, as I started to say before, the three first selectmen of the towns came to the Board of Ed in 2011, and again, it's the present first selectman from Roxbury and Washington, and the former first selectman from Bridgewater, and said that the current system cannot continue. We need a different solution. And that the solution had to address curriculum and instruction, technology, and they were set out as goals, goals 1, 2, 3. Rising costs of education in the region, continuing declining enrollment, and inefficient facilities. The Board of, the three first selectmen brought to the Board Mr. Jonathan Costa from Education Connected Connection, and asked the Board to hire Mr. Costa to lead the long-range planning committee of the Board of Education. The Board accepted that recommendation with thanks. It did hire Mr. Costa. In fact, I think the towns actually paid Mr. Costa, or at least a portion of his fee. We had a very involved, long-range planning process that involved community, board members, staff, a tremendous amount of time and energy was put into that endeavor. So that's how we got started. It was brought to us that something has to change. It cannot go, continue to go on where we're at. The next slide? The next, oh, I changed it. Go ahead. Sorry. The next few slides, these are facts, all right? These are facts that we have to deal with. We are, have experienced a 59% decline, I'm sorry, a 59% decline in student population has been projected over a 22-year period. From 2003 to 2013, our student population has gone from 1,170 students to 796 students. That's a loss of 373 students in 10 years. That's almost a 32% decline in population. We're at approximately 797 students today, and the forecast, as provided by Dr. Prada, is 461 students in 2023. Next. This is a projection of the average class size per grade. See where we're at in 2012 and 2013? Maybe hard to see the colors, but we've got the high school, middle school, Washington Primary School, Booth Free School, and the Burnham School. And you can see that in 2023, it's projected that Washington Primary School will have 13 students, Booth Free School will have nine students, and the Burnham School will have four students. We have, right now, four students registered for the Burnham kindergarten for next year. Four students. One of those students is the child of a staff member, so it's not even a person who lives in Bridgewater. The reality is, each year, for the foreseeable future, our class sizes are dropping. Thoughts that the Board has expressed in the long-range plan that was brought forward are that the class sizes are unequal. They're too small. They're not educationally sound for students. There's too little opportunities for socialization and interaction with peers, and they lead to some students being labeled. Next. This is a graph showing that currently we have the third highest cost in the state to deliver an education. This shows the gross cost per student without inflation. You can see that the red line is declining, which is the number of students, and the blue line is increasing, which is the cost to educate. Such that at our present situation, by 2023, it'll cost nearly $50,000 per student to educate our students that we have, we remain as we are. It's been told to us by the first selectman, and I believe it's apparently obvious that we cannot continue with this situation. All right, next. This shows the elementary schools, the pre-K to 5, the operating cost, the direct cost, and the student projections. This is not taking into account inflation. This is the direct cost per school. So we have the blue, I'm sorry, is the Burnhams, the cost for the Burnham School, the red is the cost for the Booth Free School, and the green is the cost for the Washington Primary School. The black line is, I'm sorry? All right, I'm sorry. The black line is the current average cost. So you can see where we're at in 2012, and by 2023, we have an average cost for the primary schools only of, in excess of $30,000 per child. The $50,000 that I spoke to about before was for the whole district. So we're looking at a 75% increase in the direct operating cost per student within 10 years. And again, the black line is the current pre-K to 5 average cost of all three elementary schools. Next. This is the scenario that the Long Range Plan Planning Committee brought forward to the Board and that the Board approved. It involves Phase 1, which is the construction, the proposed construction of a new pre-K to 5 consolidated elementary school, and investments in the middle high school. It doesn't answer all the questions with regard to this building. We don't know what's going to happen, but it allows us to consider our options, and the options are set forth in, these are some of the options, Scenario A, B, and C, in the future, as to what might happen, and what the Board may have to deal with. So it's not, there's no intent to say that this is going to deal with all of our problems, even if these referendums pass. We're going to have to continue to deal with them in the future, but we'll have solid options in front of us. We believe that this option, the majority of the Board has voted for this, will attract and retain families, and that we believe it's the best option. There's been a lot of options, a lot of talk, you can imagine, hours and hours and hours have gone into this. We believe, the majority of the Board believes that it's the best option to bring to the There will be other possibilities in the future with regard to this building. You've heard some of them tonight, some opinions you've heard tonight. But this, the majority of the Board believes that this is a necessary first step. What is being proposed tonight is a necessary first step. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Cassinelli from Fletcher Thompson and his team. Dan can do that, and he will take us through the work that they've done. Dan?
Thank you. Just want to take over, and Mike Berger's our K-12 studio design leader, and Ken Viejas with the program manager, Arcadis and ONG, who are helping us on this project as well. Just to reiterate what the scope, I apologize, I'm going to take this off if I can. It's a little easier for me to talk, so you can hear me better. Essentially, our charge has been to develop a new pre-K to 5 school on the Shippawak campus with a projected enrollment of 277 students, bringing our communities together, site analysis and assessment, conceptual design, and cost estimate, and then successful referendum. Some of the common topics, we've had community discussions in each of the three towns, we've had discussions with faculty and administration, we've had discussions with the Board of Ed. Some of the common topics that we've heard throughout all of our meetings and information gathering is really tying the community together. Safety and security is a major important aspect for any new school in the state of Connecticut and throughout the nation. Just to touch on the point of security in schools, the state actually has a guideline now that we have to adhere to as part of seeking state funding for a project. There's a set of criteria that they, that we have to apply to each of our buildings. We've actually been designing safe and secure facilities for over a decade. You know, we've learned things from Columbine on through Sandy Hook and events, and first and foremost is student-faculty safety within a building, and to create layers of security to really develop, slow down a process, God forbid, a process ever occurs at a school, you slow it down so that first responders can get there. So I have kids that are in school, believe me, it's first and foremost in everybody's mind, security. But as, just to reiterate, there is a state guideline now that we have to adhere to, and any project seeking funding, I believe as of July 1st of this year, so that'll be incorporated. So we've got a cost-efficient, flexible design. We want a facility that's flexible. Spaces support, common core, and changes in educational philosophies, technology and sustainability, and of course, community use. We know that these facilities are heavily used by everybody in all three communities, and so we want a facility that can be shared with the communities. And a school campus, creating this school campus that's shared between Shippawak and the new elementary school. Many of you who have been to meetings before, we've created a space program based on the education specification that was prepared by the Board of Education. These are a list of spaces that are administrative, health center, reading for special ed, classrooms, art, music, library, physical ed, cafeteria support services, and building services. So they all have an area assigned to them, which were directly related to the ed specification. We've honed those down to try to save space because we were over the allowable state area, and to maximize the state reimbursement, we've worked closely to bring those square footings down. I'm going to turn over to Mike, he's going to talk a little bit about our preferred options this evening.
Thanks. Good evening again, I'm Michael Berger with Fletcher Thompson. And the conceptual, preferred conceptual plan that I'm about to walk you through is really the result of the educational specifications approved by the Board of Ed, direct input from you guys, the communities, the educators, principals, and again, with the Board of Ed directly. We looked at a number of sites, we analyzed the existing site up here on the hill on the campus, and early on, we identified three different potential locations, number one being up on the fields, number two is the preferred site that we're going to walk, I'm going to walk you through, and site three is located right here, adjacent to the pond. So this is the preferred site, starting at the main road and the main entranceway. We carved this new entrance drive, which takes you up the hill and around the fields, again minimizing disruption to the fields that you do have up on the hill, again a non-reimbursable expense, so minimizing disruption to the fields is a plus. Also the potential for later down the road, if, a security gate, we're talking about security, and that can start right here, right into the front door, if so desired. So looking around the existing fields, you start to see these bands of parking located out in front of the school, trying to preserve that this nice line of trees where the elevation change is located right here. There's a dedicated bus queue located here to the north, and then a dedicated apparent drop and parking to the south, again separating bus versus car against safety, really starts outside the school and again falls through. The bus and the parents will both drop off and pick up the students at this entrance closet and lead into the school. There are secure play areas behind the school, adjacent to the educational pods, again keeping the students, the classrooms, farthest away from the parking and from the front door. There's also potential for garden and outdoor learning areas and other enhancements here. and then other enhancements here. Again, in the summary of some of the pros for this preferred scheme, again, a separate school with its own identity, separate from the middle school, high school, and some of the older students. Parking separated, again, to ease the congestion that's already present at this school. Again, separating cars, pulling that back farther into the site is a plus. Minimizing disruption to athletic fields, which are in great shape and fantastic fields up here. Also, parking can double. The parking, the new parking, again, is directly adjacent on the other side of the fields, which can double as overflow parking for athletic events. And the ability to expand, which I have a slide a little further on. We have cited this building for potential future expansion if that's necessary in the future. And also, it's a secure site. We also took a look at four other plans, which led to this fifth plan, again, based on feedback from you and the educators, to which we refer to as Option E. This scheme, we rotated the plan. So north would be to your right. So we rotated 90 degrees to the previous plan that you saw. Front doors located here where the red arrow is. Bus drop-off and parent drop-off located right here for the entrance plaza. As you enter the school, you enter into a secure vestibule. Again, it's the doors that can be locked down after the students are already in school. So you'd have to be buzzed in through the first set of doors, and then there's another door, which is hard to see on this plan, but then you would have to enter directly into administration. So again, security starts right at the front door. Administration, reception and principal and other spaces within admin have direct view of both bus and parent drop-off. Again, so that you can see whoever's arriving up that entrance drive and whoever's arriving at the front door. Also located at the front, we have the library. Again, a special space within the school, kind of the heart of the school. On the right-hand side, we have your gymnasium, your cafeteria with a double-sided platform that can be used by both sides. As we talk about flexibility, flexibility of the space that can be used now. Also, we're not sure how it's going to be used in the future. So planning on, you know, medium-sized assemblies within the cafeteria can use that platform, but also in the gymnasium for larger group assemblies like tonight, we can be held in the gymnasium. And then additional support spaces. On this side of the building is really your private zone, your kind of quiet side, which houses your pre-K, K in one wing, your pod located here. Again, with its own support, toilet spaces, faculty toilet storage, everything that that age group would need. And then the older students, grades two, three, four, and five, located in this pod. So older students really have no business wandering down this hall. Again, creating some security, safety and comfort zone for those younger students. And also, we're showing a set of doors located here and located here, and creating that additional layer of defense or delay in the case of an unfortunate event. You're creating a delay point and security point at these private zones here. And then at the front of the school, we have your specialty spaces. Like I said, your library, some special ed functions, your art, and then your music spaces up front. Again, showcasing the arts, art and music located right up front. Talking about the possibility of expansion. So these are the two classroom pods that we just spoke of. And simply by adding two classrooms here, two classrooms on the end of this pod, and basically another wing adding up to another wing, you're staying on the western side of the elevation change. You can add an additional 12 and 13 classrooms plus support spaces. Now, what does this building want to look like? You do live in a wonderful part of the state. Rich history of architecture that we've preserved in a lot of the building structures that you have in your three towns. So this building wants to look like it belongs, a building that you can be proud of and reflect your values. Again, for orientation, the front door is located here. Here's your library with its beacon. Administration up front, your gym and your caf, and your larger volume spaces, public spaces located here. Your art and your music celebrated up front with an architectural gesture. And then your classrooms located out in the back. The screen that you're seeing here is a hint of a vegetated roof possibly. We talk about sustainability and showcasing sustainability in the design of the structure. We're also showing photovoltaic arrays, opportunities on the roofs and those parts of roofs that do face south. And then the renderings that you're seeing here, it's been a discussion going around about what materials does this building want to have? What does it want to say? And right now, we're showing stone, a combination of stone, red brick, you've got a red, a school brick red, and then a combination of white siding. This is a view from the parking lot as you would approach the school. Again, your main entrance is located here with your library and your specialty spaces, art and music located up front. Then your classrooms tucked away around the back. A closer view as you approach the school. Again, there's your photovoltaic array, your classrooms, letting enough natural light into the classrooms, but just a fine balance between enough glass but not too much glass. And this is a view from the entrance plaza. Again, your front door is located here. Talk about appropriate scales, appropriate materials. And then also a night view that this school, obviously, it functions as your community centers as well, so will be used for meetings like tonight. So I think it needs a warm, welcoming feeling in the evening as well. Now, I'll hand it over to Ken Viegas to talk a bit about the...
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. All right. Oh, Ken Viegas from OMG, I'm sorry. Let's talk about the repairs and what we're going to do here for the middle school and high school. The Facilities Committee put a long list of items together. They kind of broke it down. What's going to be happening five years, 10 years out? So what we looked at was, okay, within five years, what have we been able to build? So that really is a list or kind of the $8 million. That's what we're looking. Find it five years out. Could you get longer? Yes. Could something come up? Yes, there's always a possibility. I moved up here, we could go, there needs to be repairs. Look at the repairs. First thing, exterior windows. If you type and walk along the school, you'll see they need to be repaired. Make it more energy efficient, preventing those issues. Flooring, we're going to replace all the flooring in this main lobby and in various areas. Also, various classrooms, office areas with carpeting and stuff like that. Casework. A lot of the casework hasn't been touched. So we want to come in, re-clear that, replace it, upgrade the countertops. But a major portion of this is going to be in the science rooms. We're going to bring up to the current standard. So you can have a complete renovation of the science rooms. Site improvements. When you walked in, you noticed that the parking lot needed repairs. You'll see that it's starting to crack. Needs to have it pulverized. Looked at the base, make sure that's corrected. Look at some of the sidewalk issues. Correct those. The pool. Pool hasn't been touched in a while. So what we need to do is come in there, do some repairs. Take the water down, look at the material, look at the base. Look at those issues, correct some of those corrosive items that need to be done. Now, before we get into the whole front entrance, I want to talk about security. Security is very important. The whole issue with signage. Now, everyone says, okay, signage. Signage isn't just putting signs up to know what room numbers are. It's for the first responders. Whether we put numbers on the exterior windows. So if someone comes, there's an issue in Room 25. They know where Room 25 is from the outside. We need to look closely at that, work with the changes that are being talked about. Security upgrades. A lot of the district we're working with, they talk about cameras, whether we're going to have, you know, motion detectors at doors, motion detectors at night, alarms at doors, so the school knows which of these doors are open. But a lot of discussion in the whole security is they say, let's keep that in-house. Let's just take care of it, do what we need to do so we don't have all this information out there on security. So if you're talking about security, sometimes a lot of stuff is done in executive session regarding security. Now, on the wall, I'm going to turn this back over to Mike. What we're looking at there is changing the overall use of that area. When you go back out there, you see how big that area is. You say, okay, what's the best use of that space? How can we make it better for the students? And Fletcher Thompson came up with some great ideas on what we're going to look to possibly do in that area. Mike?
Thanks. It is a great space. It's a big space. I think it lacks direction. And so what we have, what we proposed here, actually, we're sitting in the auditorium located right here, and the two doors on either side located right here. The front door and the planetarium just for orientation. So our plan is to really give that space some order. And with some, it's really cosmetic upgrades, creating defined spaces, really kind of breaking up the large expanse out there. We've been to the school a number of times over the past couple of months. And every time we're here, a different group of students or organization are using that space, whether they're building sets out here or practicing. It's used. So it's a great space, and a lot of the new schools that we design, educators desire a space like this. So with some simple cosmetic upgrades, we're identifying a kiosk, a wayfinding kiosk, getting informational kiosks directly inside the front door and adjacent to the front office. And with the construction of some low walls and some key spaces, again, it's a conceptual idea right now, which would be refined. And then some loose furniture that can be rearranged and moved around, suiting the need of the function, can really help a long ways in really defining the space, as well as creating a sense of identity. Again, I think bringing some color into the space and some school spirit, and even with some VCT logos on the floor can go a long way. And then we have a couple of interior perspectives. You know, it doesn't have to be wood, but a new ceiling interior maybe, pulling it down and introducing a warmer ceiling. You do have these nice skylights. Maybe the softens around them are reshaped to create a different feel within the space. Again, here's your kiosk, and then some of the loose seating through the space. And then this is a view from the back here, looking back towards the front door. Again, some of these low walls, again, break out spaces for the school.
Thanks, Michael. What I'd like to talk about now is the cost of the elementary school. And then I'm going to talk about the cost for the high school. All right. Right up top here, this we refer to as the hard cost. Hard cost is the actual cost of the building, the bricks, the mortar, the concrete, the site work. You'll see that dollar amount is $28,321,000. Then below that, we have what we refer to as the soft cost. Right here. Soft costs are furniture, technology, the architect's fees, if there's bonding cost. Stuff that's what you need to build the building, but actually isn't part of the brick and mortar. So if you get that, you'll come down, that's roughly $4.2 million. So now you have a total project cost, gross cost there, of $32,597,000. Everyone says, okay, does that include everything? Yes, it does. So when you go in there, you'll get the key to the front door, all the furniture, all the flooring, everything will be done. You'll be walking into a brand-new building. Now, let's talk about what the state's going to reimburse you for. All right. Connecticut OSF, Office of School Facilities, has a space standard. They look at roughly 128 square feet per student is eligible for reimbursement. What that means is they say, okay, you know you're going to have 277 kids. How much space is eligible? So you take 277 kids, you multiply 128. That is the eligible square foot that they're going to reimburse you on. But you see, your ed specs have here that you're going to be building a facility roughly of $57,000 right there. Okay. So you're oversized on that building. The reason is, with a small school, every school needs cafeteria, every school needs a library, every school needs an office, every school needs a gym. So you have that square footage. So what happens is it's very difficult for a small school to build to the state standard because of those core spaces that you're needing. Also, you'll see here, the reimbursement rate is 22.86. Now, let me try to explain how, or how they come to what they're going to reimburse you for. You take the total dollar amount, $32,597,000. You have an estimated eligible project cost, which is right here. That means not everything is eligible for reimbursement. So right now, what's eligible for reimbursement, a gross dollar amount, is the $30,967,000. Then you have reimbursement reduction of the $11 million. That's for that oversized square footage. So that comes off of the total gross amount. Then you take that, and you have an eligible reimbursement of the $19 million right there. You multiply that times the 22.86%, and that gets you the $4.4 million. So that's what the state's going to reimburse you, $4.4 million. And then you take the $4.4 million, subtract it from the $32 million, and that gets you, cost to Region 12, it's going to be the $28,191,000. So... Now, that is for the elementary school. The high school, the high school, middle school's a little different. Middle school, high school. You have an estimated project cost of the $8.2 million. Now, what's eligible for reimbursement is the $4 million dollars. So the half of it's eligible for reimbursement. So now you take the 32.86, you multiply that times the $4 million. That gets you a state reimbursement of the $1.3. So that's what the state's going to continue, give it to you. So you take that $1.3 off the $8.2, and it gets you the net cost to Region 12 of $6.9 million. Now, you'll see that there's a different reimbursement rate. For renovation, you get 32.86. You build new, it's a 10-point hit on that. So that's the reason there's a difference in those two numbers. Now, let me go over exactly what you're going to see. Let me go to vote. You'll see that there's the gross amount up top for the elementary school and the gross amount up top here for the middle school, high school project. And then if you go down below, you'll see the gross amount for the $40 million. When you go to vote, you're going to see the gross amount of the $40,897,000 that you have to vote. The state requires you to vote for the full amount with the assumption that you're going to get the money back from the state so it actually costs Region 12 the $35,150,000. And everyone says, okay, what guarantees do we have that the state's going to have the money there? Well, if you were to proceed with this project, the items that are eligible for reimbursement have to go through a review process. And besides the time it would take the architect to design this process, the drawings and everything, you wouldn't start construction for a year round. So if it gets approved, you go into the filing in June 15, by June 30th of this year, to the state. Funds do not become available until the following June, May-June time period. All right? So what happens is you would start your design, proceed to the design, bid the project, but not award any contracts for construction. Okay? So then you make sure your funding's in place before you start to make sure, especially if you're getting reimbursement, that it is there. That's the safeguard that you have for that. So everyone says, you know, well, we don't know what's going to happen. That's your protection. So, you know, the way you're going to go out is you're going to be paying for the architect to do his design and taking a risk that you're not going to get the money. But it's not a huge portion of the overall project size. Now, I'm going to turn over to Valerie Anderson, who's the chairman of the Finance Committee and the Board of Ed Treasurer, to talk about... A little bit of the operational cost, I'm sorry.
Hi. So the question is, can we afford this?
So the question is, can we afford this? And it's something that should be very much at the top of our minds and our questions tonight. And I want to thank Anthony Mato and Bob Geeson. They worked tirelessly on preparing very complicated, very complex spreadsheets. And a lot of people in the community that were part of the long-range planning have developed and overseen also, how can we afford this? And simply, how do we afford it? By cost savings. The first graph shows you that if you take what we have now in terms of staffing, elementary school only, about 59 FTEs, full-time equivalents, or teachers, staff, that we can see a cost savings by bringing that staff necessity to provide an excellent education down to 31. Perhaps additional cost savings for staff could occur as well. Also, we see a 27 percent reduction on operating costs to the right there, just in terms of electricity, building maintenance, oil, other heating, any number of maintenance costs just to keep the doors open, we will save money. If you combine staffing savings and overhead savings, we can actually service this debt. And I do want to say, Bob Geeson and Bond Council have worked out an excellent plan in which some of the debt that we have been paying has been rolling off, has been paid appropriately. We're going to bring new bonds on in kind of a process, so that the impact on our operating budget, that is to say, our debt, will be minimal. And in fact, you see on the next slide, a very interesting dip in our operating budget as we bring more efficient plant on and as we manage our debt servicing. And indeed, over time, we'll see basically a fairly steady decline in the operating budget, and the elementary school project itself will hit its breakeven point in year 15. I'm not saying 2015, year 15 of the project. We occupy in 2017, and in year 15, which is basically 2027, if we live that long, the elementary school will be at a breakeven. And the entire project, that is to say, the Chapaud money as well, will be paid off, I'm sorry, will be at a breakeven in the 17th year. So all of this has been managed and sculpted properly, so we're not going to see any big hit on our operating budget. So yes, we can afford it.
I'd love to introduce Michelle Borah, member of the Board of Education, who's going to discuss some of the... Don't worry, we can discuss.
First, I'm going to just talk about the busing. I was asked to speak a little bit about the busing really briefly, because bus rides and bus times has come up as a question. And my committee for the long-range plan process before this met with the bus company to go over the busing, so they asked me to speak to that really briefly. Using today's K-5 students, and we have 276 of them, we are able to get all of the students from their three towns up to the Chapaud campus in 45 minutes or less. And that was a number that the committee felt was an okay, a tolerable number. We've since called around to some of the other school districts in our area, Litchfield, Region 1, Oxford, and Milford, and all of them have longest bus rides of 45 to 50 minutes. So we're right in that ballpark of a bus ride. And I just want to point out that that's a longest bus ride. We actually, with today's current students, we only have one bus that's traveling that long. So for each of our buses on the road, that first child that is picked up is often living out on a dirt road and is riding on the bus for several minutes before the next child is picked up. So every child that gets on after rides the bus or less time. I also wanted to point out that we did the maps, drew the maps and figured out the times. The bus company knows exactly how long it is between each and every stop. And they use today's students to just have something to work with. That's 276. When this building would open, we would have 60 less students. So there's no reason to believe that those bus times cannot be reduced a little bit. We can't say exactly how much, because it's dependent on where those students live. But 60 less students should take a little bit less time to pick up. So I just wanted to address that really briefly. And then, just to summarize this plan about, you know, why we're doing all of this, we talked about the long-range plan and the building, and we haven't talked a lot about the educational benefits. We've spoken a little bit about some of the classroom space. But we have three really great schools, and if we bring them all, our students all together, we'll be providing more opportunity for those students. Providing opportunity for those students to have peers of their own age to learn with and to play with, opportunities for teachers to collaborate with. So we have a very nice vibrant learning community and environment in that school. Providing a lunch program is something that we haven't talked about anymore, and it doesn't seem like a huge thing, but it could be a huge, it could be huge to some students. I know we've had families in the past that have provided free and reduced lunch, and we've had nothing to offer but milk because we don't have a lunch program. So that would be a huge benefit to many families in our district, plus something exciting for the students to have, something, a hot lunch program. Obviously, a new building would provide the latest in technology, enabling us to provide a 21st century learning environment. When we talk about comfortable and energy efficient, we shouldn't underestimate things like air conditioning, because we've actually had to close the schools because we don't have air conditioning, and it was too hot on some of those late June days. And meeting air quality and light quality, there are many benefits that a new building would bring to our students. And we've touched on the safety and security, not just in the design, but in the surveillance. So a lot of educational benefits of having all of our students together. The Board of Education wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know everybody is very busy, and we appreciate you coming to hear this. We understand that this is a difficult decision for everyone to make. We want you to have the facts to make that decision. This presentation will be on our website, and all of the materials that came before, all the resources from the long-range plan and the presentations that were made to the Board of Education can be found on our website. So feel free to go back. It's a lot to digest all in one evening, but you can always find all of that information there. And we really hope that everybody goes up to vote, because we want to hear from everyone. We want to understand the feelings of the communities and everyone that lives in our community. These are some pictures from the long-range planning. Again, just thanking everyone who participated in this project. And I can't say that enough. We had over 75 community members serving on the long-range planning committee, broken up into multiple groups, looking at many, many options and exploring all the pros and cons of those, and coming down, you know, whittling that down to these solutions. So we thank everybody for that, and we thank you for coming and being interested in this. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim now for questions.
Thank you, Michelle. All right. So I will open the hearing to hear from the public, same rules as before. Is there anyone who'd like to address this? Raise your hand. Yes, sir. Mr. Wayne. Just state your name and go ahead.
Ed Wayne Wright. I'm still from Bridgewater. My question is, relates to the Chapaud repairs. Gentleman put up $4 million of repairs that were eligible for reimbursement. I assume that he has a list of these repairs. Would he be willing to share this with the public?
Yeah. If I remember correctly, Pat said the list was actually put online, too, but I'm sure we can get that list to you.
Where is it online? I've looked many places.
Do you have the eligible pieces online?
The eligible pieces?
I know, I'm not sure if eligible pieces...
That's my question.
We'll get it there tomorrow.
We'll get it there.
Tomorrow. I will, I'll be there. What time? Tomorrow. I'll be there.
We'll get it up by 12 o'clock, but we'll have copies for you when you arrive.
Oh, well, that's good. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just say, two questions on the...
Will you stand up, please, and tell us your name and where you're from?
Catherine Sirey.
You have to speak up.
Catherine Sirey, question. Two quick questions. Do you have any renderings of the science flaps that you're going to be using? There's definitely some, because that's one of the larger expenses.
Yeah.
And to how long will the repairs take here, taking the building?
Okay. First of all, you know, we don't have any renderings on, you know, the science room we're looking at on that. Fletcher Thompson wasn't hired to do that. This is more, that study came from the facilities committee on looking at what they're going to do, but they're looking at complete renovation. Looking at roughly about a million dollars for those science rooms. And that being eligible for reimbursement because of code issues, we'd have to go through the state review process. So what we look to do is, whether we could start that during the summertime, do a couple rolls, and then just doing a swing operation, if then we actually went, you know, couldn't get it all done in one summer, force us to do some of the classrooms, maybe renovate to offline, or, you know, move them into new. So, and then the other issue, whether it's windows, flooring, a lot of that stuff would be done during the summer. And if it's not eligible for reimbursement, as soon as you guys approve it, the town is going to be Region 12 can actually move on those repairs because it's not eligible for reimbursement.
You could start this summer.
If there's something you got approved, yes, if the funds, because you're actually approving those funds, it has nothing to do with the state, so you can move on those items.
So in total, how long will the repairs take?
The repairs will probably, you know, you've got to look at that, I want to say, at least a good year out, okay? Because especially if there's any hazardous material, you're going to want to do that when the kids aren't in school, so that would affect when you do some of these operations.
So two summers and a full school year?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes.
Can I just add to that? We really, if this does pass, we really want to get as much done as we can before the NEAS visit next March. So we can't promise everything, but we will move on the high school, middle school, high school as soon as possible.
All right. I mean, one exception to the lady, but everybody else is going to have to agree with that. Yes, ma'am, in the back? Yes.
Jennifer Bunner, Roxbury. I would like to know how much, what the life expectancy of this building is and how much time these renovations are buying us, before we have to go through all of this again.
There's a word to the expert, Thomas. All right. Let's talk about the elementary school. The new schools that we're building nowadays, you're getting 40 to 50 years before you need to do a major repair. But, you know, just like your house, after 20 years of use, you know, with all these kids and everything, you may have to redo the flooring, you may have to look at some HVSE equipment. Technology is always changing. So those items, you know, we look out 20 years on those items, and you're going to have to look to do some major repair. If you take a walk around this school and you look at, okay, when did we build it? When did we actually do, what have we not touched, what have we touched? And you get a good sense of what needs to get done. Now, on these repairs, like I said, this was just the facilities committee thinking, okay, next five years, what do we need to do? I'll tell you, maybe six, seven years out, your roof's going to be 20 years old, you're going to be looking at possibly doing a roof job here. You're going to have other items, rooftop equipments that may need to be replaced. So this is just going to be, on this project, this school, it's just going to be a reoccurring thing that you're going to have to put more money, more money aside in your capital pool for projects to keep this school moving along.
Is there an estimated expiration date for this facility?
No, no, there isn't, as far as I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sir?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. White?
Yeah.
Yeah, Ed Wayne, Roxbury. I have a question for Mr. Vega. As I said, I'm skeptical, but this question is not regarded in regard to that skepticism. I'm also a little bit late in getting into the game and learning what's going on. In what capacity are you here tonight?
I work as a consultant for Arcadis. And what we were hired to do was to oversee the estimates that were done by Fletcher Thompson.
The reason why I ask is, I don't know, maybe it's just the way I'm reading into it, but when you talk about, we're going to do the work, and I kind of get the impression that, you know, maybe ONG already was awarded the bid contract.
Oh, no. Let me just walk you through that. If you approve this project, elementary school or the renovations, everything is publicly bid. All the bids actually come back to the town, they're all publicly opened. So, you know, that's all needs to be bid out.
Well, you know, here's my concern. And not because just of a recent conversation, but because of what I've learned historically. I had a recent conversation with an estimator for a firm that does some schoolwork. And we were just talking candidly, and the firm's going to remain nameless at his insistence. But he suggested to me that the normal process for bidding and hoping, you know, to get a school job is to bid the job low, and then get your money back through a predestined series of work change orders and cost increases. And, you know, he kind of scared me. And I was trying to look for data on recent school projects and whether or not they came in at or under budget. Now, I know, I know through your involvement in ONG, I don't know what your capacity is in ONG, but ONG does a great deal of schoolwork.
That's correct.
Do you have any idea as to, as to the percentage of projects that ONG does that come in at or under budget?
Yes. Well, let me walk you through the whole process on this, the elementary school. What will happen is, if Region 12 approves it, the architect will proceed to the design. This design is done in a series of steps. First one would be schematic design, design development, construction documents. At the end of each of those phases, your construction manager, or maybe, would estimate the project for you to make sure you stay on budget. So, and as you go along, he's proceeding, continuing to develop, as they develop the documents, additional estimates are done. So you'll be able to see it as a taxpayer where you stand budget-wise. Then after the documents are done, the state reviews the plans. The plans go out to bid. So when you talk about bidding low, no, we want to make sure you have enough money to do this project right, because there's no way we're coming back, or, excuse me, Fletcher Thompson, the board of ed wants to come back and say, hey, guys, we need more money because we didn't have enough.
So I guess in your capacity at ONG, you really don't know about any data as to how many projects come in at or under budget?
It's, we've only had recently one project that came in over budget, the Weathersfield High School, and that was a renovation project. We had already counted additional PCBs that we're not planning for there.
And maybe, Dan, I mean, you guys do a great deal of schoolwork. Do you have any idea as to percentages of your projects that come in at or under budget?
Typically, our projects as well hit their budgets, whereas Ken said, what we've seen recently in some existing buildings is just the hazardous material issues with the PCBs. But typically, what we try to do is get that tested upfront to understand whether or not they exist or not within the facility. I'd have to say, in my 17 and a half years with Fletcher Thompson, off the cuff, I'd have to say, over 95 percent of the projects have met or been under budget. Projects I've been involved with.
In regard to, you know, hazardous materials, this building was built in 1969, a year somewhat infamous for the use of hazardous materials. Has such an assessment been done, you know, in this building to estimate the cost?
I believe that at every, every existing school that's in place, there's a report that has to get filed. I think it's every three years now with the state on the materials that are within the building. We were not involved in the original scoping projects for the work here, but I do believe that there was information that was provided for a cost for that work that may be involved with the work here.
Ken, did you want to...
Yes. You look through the, there is money being carried for hazardous material. The areas that we're going to touch, there was money set aside for that. Right now, could we experience something that's above and beyond? Yes, there is always that possibility, especially with PCB in the area where it's leached into and what we've experienced in the past, that could be a concern.
I just had one other question in regard to, you know, the education, which to me is, you know, the most important issue here. You know, currently, we have what we have. We have three nice little elementary schools, and our children all move up, and most of them enter the middle school. Now, there's, you know, talk tonight about how, you know, pulling these kids together in larger groups with their peers is going to be an educational benefit. Is there any data, and it's pretty simple data, we now have test scores and how our elementary school students measure up with the rest of the state? Right now, that's pretty good. Bridgewater on the one, Roxbury close behind, Washington not doing too bad. How do our middle school students, once our fifth graders become sixth graders, how do they do on mastery tests in the state of Connecticut? Is there anybody that could shed a little light on that?
Mr. Chairman, can I have Mrs. DePrito speak to that?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
If you're speaking specifically about Chapaud Valley Middle School, our students do very well with the transition to middle school, and by the end of eighth grade, they are performing at least 90 percent at gold. So they have been done, they've been doing well.
I'm sure you're aware of the recent numbers, you know, with Burnham in both, you know, '95, '93, '90, Washington. Currently, let's, those same mastery tests, were they conducted on a middle school level?
Yes, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
And what were those results?
That's what I just said, by eighth grade, we're looking at 90 percent at gold.
Yeah. I mean, that was, when was the last mastery test?
A year ago.
A year ago?
Yes.
And it was 90 percent?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a slight reduction in their scores as, I mean, we can't compare the same kids, but I'm just trying to generalize.
You have to understand, it's a completely different assessment and more rigorous, because the content is significantly different than when they are younger, so it's not comparing apples to apples. When you look at the vertical alignment that the state studies from grades three through eight, you see the progression for the students as well.
All right. I heard a really interesting statistic...
Hold on, hold on, wait a minute. I'm sorry, ma'am, hold on. Sir, are you done?
Yeah, no, just quickly, yeah, and then I'm done. I can do anything. See, my contention is, is that there is no model for what our children may or may not do when they're brought to this proposed new school. when they're brought to this proposed new school. Because basically, it's never been done before on a regional level. We are the only region, and the only, we will be the only three towns that don't have an elementary school. So if, if indeed your, you know, your projections for, you know, educational benefit, et cetera, you know, come true, you know, that'd be great. But I just hope that's the case.
All right, thank you. All right, ma'am, did you want to say something?
I think one of the.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Michelle, in case you've forgotten, Region 12 mom, daughter at Washington Primary, looking forward to us all collaborating on the future of education. When we look at the colleges to which Chappagh students are accepted, it is profoundly moving. Also, I, one of these moms, I actually researched private schools before we bought a house in this region to see, to see what kind of colleges Chappagh, Chappagh students get to go to. We have a more, a higher Ivy League accept, matriculation than many very expensive preparatory schools. We should be very proud of what we achieve in our middle school and in our high school. And I heard a very interesting statistic just today that not only do we matriculate excellent higher education, institutions of higher education, our students graduate from those schools. They don't just get into them, they graduate from them. I think we rank ninth in the state for our students graduating in a four-year education. So when you look, when you try to compare, you know, what if, what will happen? We know what will happen. We will produce excellent students.
Jason McKays, still from Reed Park. I've seen a lot of statistics on the different scenarios with the schools and costs and everything. What I really don't see is an end-to-end business case, a compelling model that really tells me the one-time cost, recurring cost, phase-out cost, and end-to-end cost over a period of time. When do we expect a business case? Because this is money, we need to treat it like it's a real project, and it should have a sustainable business case.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Amato to answer that. I want to briefly introduce Mr. Anthony Amato, for those who don't know him. He's put in a tremendous amount of volunteer time into this endeavor. Anthony, he's asked me not to say this, but I'm going to for the benefit of the public, I think deserves to know who he is. He's a 20-year resident of Washington, has four children in the Region 12 school system, has an MBA from Columbia University, and 25 years of experience in general management, finance, and strategic planning. So with that said, Anthony?
Thanks, Jim. So, the numbers, the last slide you saw.
Anthony, you need to speak.
So, the last slide that you saw had an average annual savings of 1.5 at 47 million over life of the project. That is a culmination of a complete business case. That includes all expenditures, all savings, over and bonding cost, everything. It's complete analysis over the bonding life, which is, runs out from today, 32 years out, when the last bond expires. That detailed analysis is available, should be on the website, Ted.
Yes.
It's, yeah, so it's a resource, it's published there. You can take a look at it, but it's pretty comprehensive.
Who do I ask if I have questions? Okay, thank you.
And to your point, there is no model of what kids may or may not do with the scores in the future. But if we do nothing, the current situation is not sustainable. So the schools disappearing in each of the towns is a self-fulfilling prophecy. No more kicking the can down the road. We're at the end of the road, what do we do next?
Yes, sir?
Hello, I'm Curtis Reed, first selectman from Bridgewater. I have a couple of comments just to start with. I thought we were going to have a public comment period at 7:15, not a whole show. And now it's almost nine o'clock, and we've lost a lot of our audience. I think the other comment I have is, you have a lot of estimates here. And in, you know, when you're looking at numbers and business, I think you want to round some of your numbers off. It's kind of crazy to say that you're going to have a new school for $32,597,202. Be a lot easier for everybody to understand if you rounded that off to the nearest thousand. Now, we have a lot of estimates here. And I think what the audience should know is that when you estimate a project like this, you would maybe include the cost of decommissioning the local schools. Maybe you would include the possibility that there may be septic issues. There haven't been any borrowings on this site. There are a lot of unknowns. If you want a metal roof, that's going to be more money. If you want those nice solar panels we saw, that's going to be more money. So I think we have an estimate here that is floating. We also have an estimate of what the interest is going to cost over time. You have a bonding rate here of 3.5%, 3.25% in 2017 and 2019. Again, I don't know how you can predict that, predict those rates. That's an arbitrary low rate. But if you just take that rate and you add it to the cost of the schools, and this is off of Mr. Amato's numbers here, the total interest over time, bonding starting in 2017 and 2019, is going to be $15,856,894. And if you take Bridgewater's share of that, 21.96%, that amounts to $3,482,174. It's hard to listen to all those numbers. Let's just round that off to 3.5 million. That's going to be Bridgewater's share of the interest on the bonds. Roxbury's share is $5,183,000 and change. Washington's share at 45.35% of the population, student population, is going to be $7,191,000. So the way I calculate this, and you have to think when you're a selectman and you're representing the taxpayers and voters of your town, people are concerned about the property taxes. So the total cost with the interest added, the new school's going to cost over $51 million. Bridgewater's share is going to be $11 million. That's equal to two years of our budget. Roxbury's share is going to be $16,600 plus. Washington's share is going to be $23 million, added to your taxes. Now, when are you going to get a payback? 15, 17 years out, 15 years out. And you think, if you look at history, what happens in 15 years that we can't predict? An awful lot. So I think, you know, realistically, we're looking at a project that we can't afford. Thank you.
Valerie?
I think we should introduce Bob Geeson and a gentleman from Webster Bank who can address the bond interest. And also, let's bear in mind that no one's asking you to pay this in two years. 33 years, 32 years is the amortization, amortization versus $50,000 per kid fairly soon. So let's address the interest issue.
Yes, the interest assumption is just that, an interest assumption. No one really knows where interest rates are going to be. We didn't want to make the project look better or worse. Those were based on current borrowing costs, and we try to be conservative based on that. But is it possible that several years down the road, interest rates will be higher? Absolutely. Is it possible they'll be lower? That's also possible, too. It's unlikely, but it's also possible. We just try to be as realistic as possible based on the current level of interest rates.
Anthony, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, there are a number of, we start with repurposing. So early on in the process, we had a meeting with the three towns, selectmen and therefore to finance regarding the treatment of the existing buildings. And it was an agreement by the three selectmen that the repurposing of the buildings would not come into, while real cost and real issue would not come into financials with respect to the region, that that would be, as you wrote, below the line. And that the towns individually would have to speak about repurposing and what the opportunities are with that building. Barbara, you were there at those meetings, and that was the agreement. So that's why those costs are not in there. So I suggest that you raise questions about the repurposing of the building back to your respective selectmen and factor that in. But that's why they're not here. The other issue, you have written the spreadsheet, but there's also a savings line there. And the savings from the staffing reductions and the facilities cost over the 32-year period is, to round the figures, $97 million. So when you say 97 minus 50, that gets you to the 40 that you saw on the previous slide. So net, all of the costs for the bonds, the interest rate, the principal, et cetera, it's a savings of $47 million back to the district. And on average, that's a million and a half dollars per year less than what you're paying today. It's, again, I'd be happy to go through the details, but that is the accumulation of all of it. You're right, the interest on the bond schedules that Webster ran at the interest rates are $15 million. So to keep the math, again, simple and rounded, if you're saving $45 million after you've spent or paid $15 million in interest, the bonds are pretty straightforward. If you double the interest rate, well, now you're going to pay $30 million worth of savings. So now $45 million of savings now becomes 30, and so on and so forth. So the interest rates would have to go north of about 12% before you wipe out the cumulative savings over the cost of the project. So I don't think anybody's saying that interest rates might not go up, but they're not quite as volatile as, as that. I don't, I'd say at least not in the next few years before you have to apply. But again, Webster is the expert on that, we're relying on their judgment.
All right, thank you. I'll ask Dan to address the question with regard to the estimates of the project.
Just to clarify, we, included in our estimate is a cost for a metal standing seam roof. And then we also have requirements that are required by the Connecticut High Performance Building Standards for the lead equivalent of Silver Certification. So provisions for whether, you know, green roof, photovoltaics, those sort of things, those provisions have been included in the estimate as well. And then there were four borrowings done out at the site in the locations of the building and the suggested areas for the septic system. So just to clarify that that was done so that we would understand what the subsurface soil conditions are. And it's Connecticut, which is Indian Rock, so we know what some of those conditions are there.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater. First, a question. At the 224 Board of Ed meeting, it was said that 54,000 per student was our future, and 50,000 was our future after consolidation, at only a mere 4% or $4,000 savings. Is that the case, or did I write that incorrectly in my notes?
Anthony, can you speak to that?
Do you have two different numbers because of inflation?
If you're, there's two numbers. There's a cost per student that we talked about tonight that was without inflation, and there's one with inflation. But your point is, on balance, there is a 4% reduction over the full 32-year period. So if you did that math, then make sure that's correct.
Okay.
If you look at the schedule, by the time the bonds expire, you're at, I think, more like 6% or 7% reduction. But it's, the math is there, not arguing with the math.
Thank you. And then just a couple of quick comments. And again, this is speaking on behalf of SOS, Save Our Schools. To support such a vague and costly project with huge tax implications, and our initial numbers are showing an 8% to 10% increase for all residents in an era of declining enrollment, is not regional thinking, it's just not thinking. We believe we have support after this referendum goes down for a solution of a K235 merge, assuming that the wording would be specific and temporary for a change to the regional plan. This takes care of any class concerns that have been raised. On April 9th, the day after the referendum, we look forward to working with whomever is willing to sit down at the table with us and take into account all three communities so that we can draw families to all three communities, not just one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, go back.
Randall Horr of Bridgewater. You have yet to answer my question. As a taxpayer in one of your three towns, I want to know what the tax raise will be on my taxes, at least an estimate. Once you build this new school, we're paying for the other three schools. The decommissioning of the schools, I know you just write it off your line, but it goes back onto the town line. And as a taxpayer, I call pay both tax, taxes for the town and for schools. So I have to absorb the cost of the commission. I would like to know what the tax increases. It's all one number.
If, I may ask Anthony or Valerie if they can address that, but just with regard to your statement that we wrote off the issue of the repurposing of the buildings.
You can't just write as a taxpayer, I'm not written or writing it off.
You just said that the board wrote it off.
Right.
We didn't write it off. Mr. Amato explained that it was in agreement with the selectmen, that it was not to be considered by the region, and the selectmen would deal with it. So with regard to that issue, I believe you're going to have to discuss that with your selectmen. Mr. Amato or Valerie, can you address the tax issue at all?
Once again, I would agree you have to talk to your selectmen because they handle your town budget in terms of what to do with your elementary schools. We cannot dictate what the selectmen want to do. That's their property. However, one idea would be to sell it and then save some of your tax money.
Valerie, I'm sorry. The question is, without the issue of the refurbishing of the buildings, do we have an idea what the tax implications will be just of the project being proposed?
Here we go. We do have some.
If, we'll be at different numbers. If we look at, again, the graph that was shown, it's a percent decrease to the current budget for the region, not just for the elementary schools. So every year, you see that line below the graph, which is, I think, all but one. Your taxes, as it sits today in terms of the budget for this school, goes down. And it goes down most, most every year. So I don't know if you want to put that graph back.
Yeah, let's put that graph back on. This one?
You got to move this block here a little bit.
It's going to take a minute. I'll say it's all right.
So, while that's coming back to life. So, while that's coming back to life...
Excuse me. We do have some information that was prepared by Bob, and we will share this with you. I frankly was just given it, and this is very important. It only addresses, though, the effect of the bond. It does not affect what your town might or might not do in the building. And Bob will be putting this online.
Anthony, is this graph that you were referring to?
Yeah. So, the graph behind me is the graph I've been referring to. So, if you... And that's the way the current bonding profile looks today, not to say that there couldn't be some smoothing of that first curve or dip down as you enter into the beginnings of the bond, which right now have a short period of interest only. But, that... If that bonding schedule would remain as it is right now with the expenditures, that's the percent reduction you would see on your school budget each year for the next 32 years.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Ken Bullock, Roxbury. I just had a quick question. What would the process of deregionalization entail? Is that something each town would be voting upon?
I'll ask Mr. Broschew. But, my understanding, because the board has previously had an official from the State Board of Education here, is that it would be basically the same process, you'd have to put forward a proposal, and each of the three towns would have to approve it.
So, it would be like a referendum again there?
Yes, absolutely. But, same with this project or this... The issue of whether the town... We will de... I'm sorry. We will amend the regional plan, requires the affirmative vote of each of the three towns. Proposal to deregionalize, as my understanding is, requires an affirmative vote of each of the three towns as well. Gary, did you want anything?
Well, I don't really make a doubt, although I have to confess I wasn't coming here. I wasn't coming in prepared to discuss the fact that Region 12 will no longer exist.
Oh, it's kind of an option.
Right. I agree with you. The brief summary by the chairman, it does require affirmative votes by each of the communities. And to enter into a regional district or to leave, that is a decision ultimately made by the voters, not the policy. Any more about this? Well, yeah, the decommission would have to be approved by the state as well. Just like when you formed a regional district, your regional plan had to be approved first by the State Board of Education before the voters then went and approved it.
So, it'd sort of be a long process then, or...
It's very similar to the opposite of what this... These communities did back in the late '60s in terms of putting it together. And obviously, you'd have to have some kind of plan in terms of what you plan to do once you no longer existed, because there's still students that would need to be educated.
I also had one quick question. Is, what proportion is the expenses of this place compared to the elementary schools? How much of the budget is spent on this building compared to the elementary schools in each of the towns as a whole?
Bob, do you have anything on that?
I...
Yeah.
Ballpark.
Don't guess if you don't know.
I don't know tonight. I don't know the exact answer tonight. We'll put it online tomorrow.
Okay. I don't have a computer. What I can find out...
Go ahead. 36 percent for the high school, 24 percent is the middle school.
Should I repeat that? So, high school is 36. The high school is at the total budget, now this is based on 2012 budget. So, the total budget was 21.355. The high school was 7.6. The middle school, 4.9. I think those should total up to about 59 percent of the overall budget.
So, this building entails 59 percent of the whole education budget of all the towns here. All right. Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Hold on.
Matt Frangial from Washington. I have a little sense of deja vu about this referendum. It seems we went through it a few years ago. And unless there's been a psychological earthquake in Bridgewater, I don't think this is going down. One doesn't have to be a weatherman to see which way the wind is blowing. And I think this whole exercise has actually been fruitless, and that the board is going to have to come up with extremely tough choices if this referendum goes down. They're going to have to look way over the horizon, either deregionalize it, charter schools in the elementary schools, the towns don't want to give up their elementary schools. They have to really look at some difficult choices. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson from Bridgewater. The question still hasn't been answered. What is going to be the total for the taxpayers paying for this? What's going to be our total increase? I'm sorry. Spending $50 million, springing out over, what, 8,000 people?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I don't know how you can spend $50 million and have a decrease in the taxes.
There's three ways to look at it. There's three ways. If you issue... If you issue bonds for the school, the debt service is going to go up. That's scenario one. Scenario two, the second way to look at it is, the district has debt service already that's running off each year. So, the second scenario adds a new debt on with the existing debt. The existing debt is running off. That mitigates or softens the impact of the new debt. The third way to look at it is to look at the new debt plus the existing debt running off. Plus, and here's the kicker, what they're talking about is the decrease in the operational cost. That is what results in that graph up there. The decrease in the operational cost mitigates all of the debt service. That's why that graph there shows it below the current cost right now. So, the 30,000 feet answer to your question is, you're borrowing a lot of money. The district, existing debt is running off, and operational costs are dropping, so that in a way, there is no additional cost. All the cost of the debt service is mitigated by the savings in the operational cost. Does that make sense?
Yes.
What happens to the rest of the teachers with this whole merger right afterwards? The union contracts, you're going to sign with, and you need to deal with...
You would have to deal with that issue. But, if there's no... I'll let Mr. Broschew answer that. If there's no work for the teachers, then I believe that we can take whatever steps is appropriate.
The school district has the absolute authority to determine the size of its work staff. So, if they have, for example, 40 teachers and wanted to go with 30, they could do that. The only thing the union contract influences, it may determine who gets laid off in terms of bumping rights, tenure, et cetera. But, the district has the complete authority to set the size of its workforce. There's no restriction on that. They could go theoretically from 40 to zero. That is entirely up to the district. There's no restriction.
Anything else?
And then, the next issue would be the bus ride. 45 minutes? It's a nice ideal of conditions. Welcome to New England. We've got snow. How long is it going to be with snow? Are we going to be having more and more snow days?
Okay. Anything else?
Anybody carry answers, man? Or you're just going to write me off?
What the effect of snow will be on the bus rides? Why?
No. Yeah, I've got a kid who's 5 years old going into kindergarten. Theoretically, if we're going to be having a school up here, it's a 45-minute ride for a five-year-old. That's an extremely long time for a five-year-old.
So, a couple of things to answer your question. One is that we already bus the children here for the middle school, high school. So, we're very familiar with how long it takes to get from the three towns to this campus. All-Star Transportation has had this contract for over 10 years, and Cam Newton, who worked on this with us, is very familiar with all of the bus routes because we run them already. So, the snow would affect all of our buses, our middle school, high school, our elementary, whether they were coming to one place or to the three. I mean, if you want to take a look at each of the routes, there's a map, and you can do that. I don't know... Is your question really just about the snow?
It's just simply, how are you going to be dealing with this with the younger children?
How would we be dealing with this with young children?
With the younger children? It's an extremely long time, you know, it tends to be on the bus.
Well, okay, two things. I could go through and talk about each of the buses, the routes that they put together. One was 45 minutes, and I believe several were 44 minutes, and all of the rest were less. And that's for the one student. So, everyone is riding for less than that. The average is under 30 minutes. And that was for the 276 students. Like I said, you would have 60 less students, so those times would come down. That is the norm in the northwest corner of the state. So, five-year-olds are riding the buses all through Litchfield County for that amount of time. And our students in our reach program are pre-K, so these are three- and four-year-olds currently are picked up all around the region and brought to Washington primary. Okay. So, and it was up here at the middle school, high school for many years. And those three and four-year-olds were on the buses coming up to the middle school, high school, which is the same campus. And there was a waiting list, so parents did not have an issue putting their students on, the three and four-year-olds on the bus coming up to this campus.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tom Singer of Bridgewater. I just want to make a statement that I see this more as a reallocation of how our money is spent than I do as a savings. Anthony is saying there's only $1.5 million a year in savings. If that's true, then we're still... The 54,000 per student drops to 51,840 at that 4 percent. I don't think we're solving our financial problems that we're having within this region. I think there's other ways to solve it. I think the K-235, in the long run, will save more money.
Thank you. Anthony, do you want to answer that or speak to us?
Just a point of clarification. I did say it was 1.5 savings per year. That is, again, that's after the bond, principal, and interest have been paid. The actual savings in direct operating costs, you know, the source of what's paying for all of this, starts off, now, of course, it's subject to escalation in the model, which is how the budgets are done, but effectively, the day, the first year where the savings comes in, it starts at 2.2 million and change, and then continues on each year thereafter. So, your savings is there. And then, the principal and the interest then comes off that. That's how you get to the 1.4. That's kind of like math. I just want to make sure that that's clearly understood.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Tim Cook from Washington. I was in the graduating, the first graduating class from Chapag. And I think we probably all agree, I think I grew up, you know, in the best place in the world and got as good an education as anybody in the country here. And I think you also be proud of the great school that we have here. We have a serious problem. We don't have enough kids, and we can't afford it. And I think there's two ways to look at it. You can either look at it as a business decision or a community decision. And I understand both sides, because I, you know, I feel both sides. As far as the elementary schools, from a business decision, it makes no sense to have three schools. It would be much cheaper to have one elementary school. But, from a community value, having our three schools is priceless. And, you know, it's a real shame when you lose... Anyone watching, we just lost our drugstore. It was devastating. I just can't imagine losing our schools in each town. I mean, that's what makes our communities. Now, as far as the high school, to me, I look at it a little bit more as a business decision. But, I'm worried about our school going out of business. I own a small business, and there's a lot of people in this room that do. If I lost 30 percent of my business, I'd probably go out of business. And if you're heading towards 60, you know you're going out of business. I've heard tonight how to spend $40 million. I haven't heard one person mention how to get more students here, because that's the real problem, our customers. That's what we really need to solve. And I've thought about this long and hard. And other, you know, you read in the paper, it seems like every other school district has the same problem. You know, Litchfield's talking to Omogo, Litchfield's talking to Thomaston. If we don't merge with another school, I think we're going out of business. Because without the students, we're never going to be able to afford this. I have a solution that I think would help three towns, three school systems. If we could convince Omogo to come to Chapag, if the kids from Warren and Morris came to Chapag, that would help us. If the kids from Goshen went to Litchfield, that would help them. Now, one of the problems with that is, Omogo's an agricultural school. So, we'd have to become an agricultural school, too. But, this would help us getting more students, because agricultural kids can come from anywhere in Connecticut. Hank Feretz has a farm that borders Chapag. I'm sure if you talk to Hank, we could have the finest agricultural school in the country. You could have a working farm. I'm sure Hank would be happy to either rent it or... I don't want to speak for Hank, but he might even sell it to you. And I guarantee it'd be a lot less than $40 million. Okay? The other problem I see, you know, you hear a lot of talk about affordable housing. Well, schooling is tied in to housing. To help solve your problems of enough students, you got to get more people in town. We are at historic lows right now in real estate, probably in 20 years, and nobody's coming to our towns. We got to help them come here. And one of the things, if you go to Granby, they have a lot of neighborhoods where they have, you know, not big houses, but just, you know, nice houses with three bedrooms. They have nice backyards, nice place for kids to play, but they have a lot of kids in their communities because of it. Now, our zoning laws are part of what make our towns great. In Washington, we really only have one development on Revera Road, which I don't know, has eight or 10 houses. It's a tremendous neighborhood. There aren't too many places in Washington, but Edwin Whitehead's property, you could probably get 30 houses up there with a little change in zoning, and Edwin would be very happy to sell his land to you, because it's on the market. And I'm sure in Bridgewater and in Roxbury, there's spots that we might have to buy the land and give it to the people that come. Still, you could do that for, you know, maybe $4 million. We've got to get more people here if we're going to save our schools. Gilbert is bringing students from China now. Of course, if you bring them, you got to house them. But, maybe if we did the housing, we can solve some of the bringing their whole families here. We need more people. We need more volunteers for our boards. We're running, you know, for a lot, for our fire departments, for our EMTs, all the things which would benefit us in all areas. Athletics. At Chapag, when I was here, you know, from '69 through '73, if you won a Berkshire League title, it was a good year. If you won the stage, it was a great year. Because we have so few students now, if you win six to eight games and make the state tournament, it's considered a good year. We can't sustain any of our athletic programs anymore. You might be able to be a good one year, you can't be good... The baseball team, I think they lost, had two losing seasons in 30-some odd years. They've had four losing seasons in a row. It's impossible for us to sustain our athletics anymore at a high... You know, if you perform that way in the classroom, it wouldn't be acceptable. And it's a great pride. I mean, it's very good for our students to be involved in music, arts, sports, very, you know, important part of their education. If you had a turf field with lights, you'd be the only one in the Berkshire League you could attract. could attract athletes. I think we should do everything we can to get the kids from Sherman to come here. They have a choice to come here. If I was a parent in Sherman and had to drive, pick up my kid after school, it'd be tough here, because probably until their senior year, they wouldn't have a license. So, you know, you'd need to have, be able to bus them home after school, but it's another possibility. I would talk to Bethlehem. I've read quite a bit that they have been a little unhappy with Woodbury. It might be another possibility. But I think to really solve our problem, we've got to get more students here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for all the evidence you've given. You're a great guy. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I would just like to address what Tim said about...
Did you want to state your name?
Matt Frangio from Washington about students. I think Obama's coming to the bridge tomorrow for Central Connecticut to promote something on industrial arts and magnet schools or something like that, to try to get kids interested in jobs that they could get right out of high school or right out of college. This goes along with the debate that maybe a college education isn't worth it. I mean, it was Obama himself that, you know, maybe an art history degree, you can't get a job. And with, you could look in any paper, look at today's Waterbury Republican for manufacturing companies in Connecticut looking for machine operators and whatever. I think to attract students here, instead of it with the technology, and I think the federal government and maybe the state would support it, if this becomes a magnet school for ma... Manufacturing center, like in the old days, it used to be shop and whatever, but this would bring it to high tech with robotics or whatever. And I think that would attract students elsewhere. This is at the high school level. Number two, I think that the possibility of this region should do like Gilbert does and try to recruit foreign students. Chinese students, they come and they pay cash. They pay full freight. They give the bill, they pay. And as far as start out with a small program and ask for people's individual houses, I saw an ad in the paper not too long ago, looking for people who are willing to house foreign students. I mean, for 50 years, it's been an American field service program where foreign countries host our students and we host some of their students. So I think that's a couple of the kind of things that people ought to look at for increasing the enrollment of the school.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, and I'll adjourn this public hearing, and I thank you all very much for attending. All the special meaning of Board of Education. Does anyone need a break? Yeah. Need a break for...